Motion to approve.
I motion by Hack to approve the agenda. Second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of this agenda say aye.
Aye.
And I oppose, thank you. Alright, Jared, you're up.
Oh boy, um, sorry I'm not there, I, I think I told you guys before that my goal is to attend last month, but it'll be ending this third Monday, I wasn't able to last month because I had meetings in Fargo, um, so I hope it's alright, but uh, my agenda is a little more full than than last time. I don't think there's a lot more approval, just more to talk about. Um, 2009 improvement project, so the process there is, um, actual completion, give the contractor punch list, get the work done, final completion. So tonight, we're at the point where the contractors completed the punch list items identified to them. Uh, we owe the contractor five thousand dollars of retainage from from last year. So, if you look closely, my math isn't adding up here, um, what's going on is, um, we had to deduct some money from mail for a couple property corners, that's the big damage. Uh, I basically took the list of corners that the link had built you guys for over the last couple of years, and you know, an average cost for each one, deducted the two that we had foregraphed the damage of, and this was in addition to other stuff that I think we deducted from them in the past. Um, so, the final payment for mail is only four thousand three hundred fifty dollars. That is page two, three, four, five, six, and seven in your packet. Um, overall, with all the deductions from the the patching, property corners, from some other concrete works that we're not paying them for, thirty-eight thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars seventy-five cents is what the total deduction was for for mail across the board on on the projects. The final payment for you guys is those two numbers, pride contracting plus mail, and uh, what the city will do is just hold that payment for pride until they are done. And gee Monty, my, my numbers on that sheet aren't adding up to me. Um.
I wasn't sure.
Fifteen oh forty-one and a forty-three fifty, together they add up to the the contractor's application for payment, which is seventeen three ninety-one, but I think the split might be just a character difference from that. I have to verify that for you tomorrow before you make a change.
Yeah, I haven't. I haven't had a chance to go through it, Jared, to be perfectly honest, so.
Okay.
I'll look at it again.
The overall, they they add, they add up to the rate numbers of like all seventeen three ninety-one, but let's just coordinate tomorrow or before you pay.
Okay.
But we we need approval from the the board on this one?
Yeah, the payment for pride is for that sidewalk that was put along there.
So the total payment is seventeen?
That amount is correct, yes.
Seventeen three ninety-one, make a motion to approve payment seventeen thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars.
Second. Motion by pillar, second by Stern, discussion. So then, um, is this the last, I guess, last payment then, Jared, so be it?
Yes, yes, this will be the last payment for mail. Your assessment commission is basing that all the assessments offered, um, this total project cost, um, which was five million one hundred sixty-three thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars seventy-six cents.
Okay, any more discussion? Roll call.
Pillar, aye, Stern, aye, Hack, aye, Wolf.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Okay Jared?
Hey, I feel like a real, I feel like a broken record saying this, but you know, the the special assessments boxes should be starting or ongoing, I'm not sure exactly where they are, but um, if they haven't started meeting already, we better get after them because they got some publishing to do. Everybody should see their assessment in the newspaper. They should have an opportunity to protest them if, yes, for some reason they're, you you don't think they're correct, um, at a hearing at at some point, so, I mean, I'm not completely in the loop with that stuff, but that that should be starting with on the October. Um, so, really the the next thing on my list, I'm just gonna skip down. The last meeting, we had told me to get two quotes off the different items. So we listed a quote for repairing Eleventh Avenue. Um, it just happened to be that Beckhill paving was doing a bunch of work at Beulah, and Monty called and let me know that, so I called them. They were very familiar with the area. They've given some other quotes in that area to pick out the other streets that that settled. So, um, should be page number eight, in in your packet, that'll be right on the backside of the contractor's application for payment. I didn't number all the pages, but this one I did. So, um, what I had them do was base their quote on, um, they gotta lower the manhole, they have to mill at all the edges, driveway locations, um, and then fill in the low areas and relay the tires. This this would be kind of Cadillac fix, about sixty-one thousand bucks to do all that work. Um, but he kinda said if you're not sure you're gonna get paid, or if you want to just do the bare minimum for now, um, which would be lower the manhole, fill in all the low spots, kinda level everything up, no overlay over the whole thing. It'd be about, um, I think it, about twenty thousand bucks. And I sent this, and I think Monty was trying to get this over to Williams.
Yeah, it was sent to Williams, I haven't heard back.
Yeah.
Jared, does Beckhill have time, does they have time to do that this fall yet, if we decide to move it away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. I mean, I I think we want to do it, but we want someone to be responsible for it too, right?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Right, so, should I tell him we need two more weeks to decide?
Yeah, we're gonna wait to hear back from Williams and yeah.
Okay, yep, I'll leave you with the agenda until next month.
Thank you.
We're sharing both of those numbers with Williams, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, alright, um, moving on to the next thing, water storage system. So, we we found a good area, um, next step in the NIPA process, environmental solicitation newsletters, we did that. Um, it's about twelve federal agencies that get them. I anticipated getting, um, responses that we're getting. So, Chipwell State Historic Preservation Office, um, said we're gonna have archaeologists look at it. Um, I sent out solicitation forms for four archaeologists to go and do their thing. Um, the low quote I included in here was for two thousand dollars. Um, it ranges anywhere from two thousand bucks to seven thousand bucks. So, that fee is built into more engineering contracts, we budgeted for that. Um, so, I intend to direct them to proceed up there. It'll be a, they'll do some title research, and then they'll do some walking around our site. You may bring a shovel or two with them, but it's not gonna be invasive, they're not gonna have backhoes or anything like that, it won't be digging holes. I do think it'd be good to let the landowner know that there'll be a, um, archaeologist in his wife, or maybe even some students or something that'll be walking around in that property up there and looking things over, and assuming they don't find any culturally sensitive sites, they'll write a report saying that it's, uh, okay to do some work up there. Um, and then you guys can acquire the property and and be done with it. Um, any questions there?
No, we're good, I'll let the landowner know.
Okay, that sounds good. I don't know when it'll be, they said they have this whole thing done since thirty days, so they might be a week out, but.
Okay.
It'll just be a, a walk in up there. Um, one of the responses that came back was from the Corps. Um. They want to ensure that we're not disturbing any wetlands up there, and normally I'd say it's not a big deal, but it goes directly north of the existing water tank. They identified what could be an intermittent stream up there. So, we gotta take a look at that, we'll do what's called an office wetland delineation, send it to them, and we'll we'll probably, we'll just have to wait for the, um, the letter to come back. So it's not, it's not a costly permit, it just takes time to process it. Based on your schedule of doing the work next year, there should be no problem. But if you wanted to start digging right now, you probably would've had to, like, go around it. But just one of those things that we have to wait on to finalize the environmental process. We get the four four permits from the Corps. Uh, just keep it in the loop, I don't, I mean, it shouldn't be a, it shouldn't be, a lot of times there are identified wetlands, you either have to bore under them or go around them, but we're not gonna do any mitigation or anything like that. I don't think it'll be a big deal.
Okay.
Um, so I guess, really, I I just started adding a few things on the bottom here of, uh, this, below designing construction, um, where if you recall, we we budgeted a bunch of money to, um, remove the equipment from your shipping plant building. You can start thinking about what you guys want that to be, I mean, you can, we can just pull all the stuff out of there and just leave it, but if you're thinking there's gonna be some purpose to that building, and you wanna try sneak a few things into this bid, the few things here or there, uh, we can look at doing that. And then, um, your new tank is gonna have some some sensors, pressure, um, sensors up there, and so we'll have opportunity to change your computer system a little bit. What you have now is, um, kind of an auto dialer, and that's pretty old technology, so we'll probably look at doing something similar, but just with a, um, either cell phone or internet signal so that the guys get notified differently if there's a intruder or a flood or a frozen pipe or something up there. But just be thinking about that, no really approval yet, but I'm just gonna leave that on there, we gotta talk about that before we start in the tip of design this fall. Um, and then, next thing I have really is just the freezing water service line. Um, we listed quotes to do that work. Um, fixed water service line is what we got addresses for, so we did a very simple, one-page quote form. Um, and the intention was to hire somebody and dig them up, inflate those areas, and then patch back the asphalt this year. Um, I want that work done before fall, for the season. Um, I I have got one quote back, but I'm I'm not gonna read it off yet, I don't want anybody possibly listening to hear what that quote is. But I, I was I was happy to see what we got, um, and I I would anticipate another three or four. Those are due on the twelfth, ahead of your next meeting. Twelve, twelve for the, can't remember the month.
Twelve.
Twelve, okay. Otherwise, um, then I guess at your next meeting you'll have quotes for the, uh, the potential work on Eleventh Avenue, and then the quotes for the freezing, uh, those are the water service lines to freeze. So, Officer, if you're gonna go forward with that, think about where that comes from and if you can sort it.
Okay. Alright, I appreciate that, thank you. Any questions for Jared?
I'm ready.
Okay, Jared, thank you.
I'm gonna, I've only got about ten more minutes before I gotta run here, so yell at me if there's something that you want me to address.
Alright, we will, thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, moving down, uh, to six A. Uh, we got a local permit for the Runners Run Poker Run. And Monty, one of.
Well, what they're doing is, you can use any type of vehicle for this poker run. For each location that they have, you get a card from your hand for poker, and then when they get back to Hazen at the Bison Bar, the best hand wins, there is no draw or anything like that, it's just the best hand wins. Spoke to the Attorney General's office, basically, if they're going to do this at the Bison Bar, since Hazen Winner Sports has the site authorized, Hazen Winner Sports would not be able to conduct gaming that day, unless they selected a different location to actually compare their hands. So, Rachel said she was gonna work with Ms. Newberger as far as getting that, so I'll just keep on top of that to make sure that only one activity is going on there that day.
And proceeds to go to Hazen Fire Rescue for helmets and gear?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, medium emotion approvals. Get motion by pillar.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. We need roll call, Monty?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both at the same time. Alright, motion carried, thank you. Alright, down to, uh, eight, uh, building permits, we have four of them. All very, all requesting variances. Um, eight A is the Volk property, and they're here.
Yeah, this is on this, um, the Volk's own two lots over there in West Hazen addition. This would be on this Lot Two, Block Two, now, this little southern lot area. Um, the variance requested is for height to go twelve feet to match the existing buildings on the property. It will be sited and, and to look like the house so that you fit in decent with everything else on the property.
Tom, do you want to add anything?
Um, no, not really, really covered it. I've got, uh, Hager Holmes doing the structure, and Tom Lee's doing the concrete. It'll be, uh, deciding the shingles, everything's gonna match the house. It's fairly level lot, we'll set that elevation, the roof lines will. Hold on, there's some trouble, it's good somewhere. The roof lines will match the house, my existing garage has twelve-foot walls in it. So, this is, this building on the other lot will match that.
Question?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. When you building it?
Uh, depends on the concrete, and it's probably about a month away yet.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Mel Roth, variance request. Building application.
This is south of his home, it's on a separate lot again. Oops, a little hard to see here. He's proposing a thirty-two by fifty-foot building with twelve-foot sidewalls. Again, this is a variance for the sidewall height, this will still be lower than his existing buildings because it is a two-story house. He will side it the same, but it will have a steel roof. I'm sorry, it'll have steel walls too, but it'll be a similar color.
Is it accessed from his?
It's actually accessed from Seventh Street on the south side.
So it's a totally separate lot too, isn't it?
Yes.
Motion by Stern.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. And next one is a building for variance for Mike Just.
Mr. Just is looking to purchase a. Twelve by twenty-four garage from a company called Six Oh Five Sheds. He brought me a picture today, it would be similar to this, except it would be the dark brown color with the lighter color trim, similar to his house, the color, the dark brown. The variance needed is for the back and side yard. And he would have to take out trees if he stayed the fifteen feet from the alley easement, or easement back there, there is no actual alley, and five feet from the side where his fence is, which is on the property line. It's eight-foot sidewalls.
Maybe one or two variance too much?
He's actually a backyard variance of ten feet and a side yard variance of two and a half feet.
I'd like to see that two and a half further.
Well, he'll still be five feet from the property line. Cause he's, for that zoning district, he's supposed to be seven and a half feet from the property line, he's proposing it only be five.
And that's so he doesn't have to remove trees, Mark?
Correct.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Alright, and the fourth permit with variance for Mike Peterson and Josh Peterson?
Okay, he's, they're requesting a variance to build a ten-by-fourteen deck on the east side of Mike Peterson's home. They would need a two-and-a-half-foot variance because this area is actually, no, it is seven-and-a-half feet. So he is proposing to be only ten feet, no, excuse me, five feet away from the property line again. It's a little misleading how this fence runs back here, but the property line does follow this parking pad of the neighbors. So he would be five feet away from this parking pad.
Is that a fence there?
There is a fence back here, yes. But he is currently fifteen feet from that fence back here.
Is that more like, kinda like a utility shed or?
Yeah. Yeah.
Where they want to put the deck is, is adjacent to the parking pad on the on the neighbor's.
Yes.
It's toward the front of the house, apparently this is the sleeping area of the house, and they want the actual access out there in case of emergency.
Sure. Motion to approve.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried. Thousand nine reports, wire sewer.
Okay, over at lift station number one, we have a communication cable that comes off of the motor into the control panel that monitors the condition of the pump. And we have a, we have a fault in that particular line. It's a specialty type cable, it's a fifty-foot cable, and, uh, we received a quote for the cable, it brings the disassembly of the existing and reassembly of the new in there in the amount of two thousand three hundred and ten dollars. So I'd be making a motion that we move forward then to repair that, so we get good return on that lift station in the amount of two thousand three hundred and ten dollars.
Hey, we have a motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. Roll call. Oh, sorry, sorry, is this cable gonna go right on the motor of that?
Yeah, it mounts, mounts into the motor, and it has a a seal fitting and stuff on there, and it drapes up in the the lift station itself up to the top where it catches a conduit into the control panel. And then they they apply the duct seal and everything like that on there to make sure that everything is weather, weather impervious.
So then I guess, they put in the spare pump? This cable on the spare pump, or did?
I think this is on the primary pump in that, uh, but I didn't, I didn't talk to Ryan to confirm that.
It it transfers over.
It does?
Yeah, there's a plate that's built onto that cable or whatever, when they take that plate off, then that will assemble.
Oh, okay, they move it over to the other one, got it, yeah.
More discussion? Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovenhour.
Aye, motion carried.
And the, uh, the other thing at our other lift stations, Brian and I had some discussions, we're looking at the technology we have in there right now for for monitoring those. And we're, we're seeing if there's some alternative technology as we move forward because you get to the point where parts are no longer available, nor are there people that remember how to service some of those technologies that are in there. Those people are retired or or moved on from from this planet, so we're, we're looking at what kind of alternatives we have for that, that's to come. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Streets. Cemetery.
I have nothing at this time.
Fire and Spelling.
I don't have anything at this time.
And police.
I have nothing.
Buster.
Hey, alright. I presented Prince County Economic Development Meeting last Thursday, which is the first one we've had in probably a year, close to a year and a half, trying to get the organization back up and running, had a change in. Change in officers, and, uh, David Brinkman is going to be the president, Buster's going to be the vice president, Jerry wasn't there, so he couldn't defend himself, but he is the president treasurer, and, uh, many operators going to serve as, uh, he's got, he's to serve as the secretary, and Jerry maybe could get out of it at the next meeting, so. He wasn't there, we didn't, we just assumed he was gonna concede.
Jerry slash Monty.
So, uh, yeah, just trying to, you know, the other thing that they're doing now is they're taking another, uh, good look at the bylaws, uh, you know, they have been looked at for quite a while, so those are gonna probably be updated a little bit. Uh, we did have some industry reports from a couple of the agencies that were there that were in tenants, but, uh, you know, we didn't have. uh, you know, we didn't have, uh, you know, great re, great turnout, you know? That's been some of the concern in the past with the MICA is, is that it's been hard to get people there. And so, uh, there were probably, I think, eight or nine of us that were there representing that various agencies. And typically, just so, you know, typically there's 13 board members, but then there's also some guests that come that do report and those kinds of things, you know? Talked a little bit about Antelope, uh, Antelope Valley's going to have some outages coming up. Brad's in room and talked about that, they'll be, they'll be looking around at outage eventually coming up as well. And, uh, other than that, you know, uh, pretty straightforward, you know, so. But hopefully we'll be able to, uh, you know, start moving, be a little more active, let's put it that way. Uh, than we have been in the past. I guess I entertain questions if there are.
Can you get, uh, if you get, I've been, I've been those broker times, can you get some of those my way?
If, if, if the former president elect. They will.
Thanks.
All right, thank you Buster. Um, under my report, I, let me, I want to touch on this, this information only is, I got a phone call the other day from Matt Erickson, who's the McLean County State's Attorney. And, uh, he has been kind of the lead speaker for their county and a few other agencies, dealing with coal and, uh, Falkirk and Coal Creek. And he is actually, he and Jason Boar from the Energy Council called me and wanted to know if we'd be willing to possibly host a meeting in Hazen up. Just all those stockholders that are involved in, uh, the, not stockholders per se, but actually, um, everybody involved in, in what, what education of what wind has to offer, what coal has to offer, what, what is the, what is the possibility of working together? What is, what happens if Mercer County decides to continue the more touring on wind? How is that gonna hurt our county? How is it gonna help our county? You know, what are our payments? You know, a lot of people have a mixed understanding of what wind payments are. You hear the commercials of, uh, New Era or, um, any of these wind companies coming and saying, we're bringing millions of dollars of, you know, revenue in your communities and your counties. Well, those are obviously very mixed messages, and obviously they, you know, they set up those commercials to, you know, sound really good. And, uh, you know, Bob Evans told us that there'd be four to five jobs in Mercer County that pay 40 to 45,000 dollars a year. That's, that's, that's the wind, that's, that's their wind companies, um, input into our county. However, uh, I think is, could be a great opportunity for, you know, citizens of our community, landowners that have possibility of having wind on their properties, or coal lease people, uh, anybody that's, any, any stakeholder, that's the word, isn't it? We're not shareholders, stakeholder, that could be involved, that's anybody in our counties. Um, and even those people that own land that don't live in our county or state. You know, the, the, the project up north here, that's 60% of those people don't live in Mercer County or North Florida. So it's one of those things where we need to know all the aspects of it. Nice that I, I kinda spoke, um, for all of us, saying I would like to see that meeting held here at some point. Um, and even our local legislators be involved, because there's a session coming up this, this winter, and with the legislation, and we, we need to be able to have, um, approach them. We, because if we don't, we know that, um, capital power and, um, next era, the, the wind companies, they will be approaching, and they will be asking for things. So we need to make sure we, we have a voice. So, uh, I will keep you informed of what's, what's to come and, uh, what, everybody will be invited out to sit. It's not, it's not gonna be just, uh, 20 people in a room. I'm hoping, I would, I would love to see 200, 300 people at a meeting like that so we can be educating everybody on both sides of it. So anyhow, that's just, uh, information only, um, for now. Moving on to 11A, uh, 2021 preliminary budget.
Marty is putting together the course. I made those changes that we discussed at our meeting. Final expenditures overall are reduced 15% from this year, the current year, and the general fund is just over 26% reduction with, with just a, it's not quite 15% reduction on general fund revenue anymore. I did put a transfer in there in case we transferred some funds in from some of our reserves, so that makes them look a little different. I guess basically I'm looking at doing our budget hearing on October 5th. Budgets are due to the county by October 9th. So your budget hearing would be during your regular meeting on October 5th for the public to address any concerns they have. So unless there's questions, we ask your approval of the preliminary budget. Again, we can't go up, but we can always go down from there, and I'll keep looking at stuff.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Pillar, second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
No.
Ovindour.
Aye, motion carried. All right. 11B, Public Works Position Report, man.
Okay, uh, last week we, we had opportunity to interview some fine candidates from our community for this position, which is a, you know, a combination position working with the, the waterworks within the city as well as with the street team. And we are proposing tonight and looking for approval from the board here to make an offer to Mr. Mike Lemire.
We had four interviews that night, and they were all very good. Did all have a kind of sweet, I don't think we proved, you know, if we had to make other options, but great too, but I, they might do a very nice job. Okay, so we have a, the motion Marty for that, or just a recommendation?
Uh, I guess you, you should take formal action that you're gonna make the offer to, pending any, pending the testing.
So I would make the motion that, that we would make an offer to Mike Lemire.
Okay, we have a motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. You'll call him tomorrow, Marty?
I will contact him after tonight.
Tonight, exactly. All right, and that takes us down to approve the bills.
I assume things work without, is that part with him?
Yeah. Actually using the hardware, it's still to previous owners, corporate name.
Marty, before we approve the bills, on this spreadsheet that you did with the various fees on it, or you want us to...
That's just for your information, if you guys can think about it, we'll work on that. So we can make them effective during the morning, or whatever.
All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the bills.
A motion by Hack to approve bills.
Second.
And second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Ovindour.
Aye, motion carried. Mr. Link?
Yes.
She has info for us, sir.
I was here to see if you folks were making any decisions on the annexation process, and the other was peaceful construction concrete replacement. And then the only question I had is, has there been any investigation that you're going to be, want to replace part of that sewer line in that north-south stretch from that main hall north? That might be about 200 feet.
I, I don't have any information on that, Dave, do you have any?
I can talk to Ryan about it, about if somebody's camera anymore, so that I wonder what it looks like.
We haven't had a camera, have we?
I thought you did a couple of years ago.
Yeah, I was just a couple of years ago.
Okay.
I need to take an action, I need to do this, or prepare to have that conversation.
Yeah. I know we've, we haven't talked formally enough about it, I don't think, to make a motion on it, or if they take action on it yet, but...
Well, the discussion at the previous meeting was that if he works along with the engineer, he was basically approved to proceed until they get ready to bid, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, the discussion about sewer line was something.
Yeah, that's different, no. Cause if we had a camera a couple of years ago, are we assuming that's not changed?
Yeah, I haven't heard anything, I forget, Ronnie would have been here when I was a cameraman, so I guess I never did hear what the results were.
Where's, where did that live?
I, I have a copy, I guess Ronnie's gonna have a copy as well, so we'll get it.
Okay.
Aye.
In the annexation aspect, I did, you know, I tried to visit with Casey a little bit, uh, some of the annexation stuff. And I guess we, we need to make, for the next meeting, we make a decision on which areas we wanna attack, so. Not tonight.
Yeah, well, I, I figured there was nothing tonight, I, I was more curious if you had any discussion that you were gonna visit about or express this evening, but you're not ready for that?
No, no.
Just the way it is.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
All right, maybe you're...